Is everybody clear on that? Councilman Ellis?
Yeah, we have a discussion.
Yes.
Okay. I really appreciate all the conversation that took place today. That's exactly why I voted yes to reconsideration. You know, it's always good to get in from the public, but one thing I want to bring to the attention tonight is I've done, I've lost a lot of sleep over this, just like a lot of you. It has been a very difficult subject matter to talk about. I myself, when I am affronted with something like this, I dig for data. I look for data that can help me understand the problem. And so that's where we've got to this today is because of some data that I've come up with that looks unbalanced. And so I'm gonna stop right there and talk a little bit about. I got five children. I've got one daughter that was a reader. And when she was in fourth grade, and I know it's under the age limit, but back then it was totally fine for her to walk the three blocks from my house and spend the day there by herself, peruse in the library, finding books to read and reading them and then bringing them home a full stack at the end of the day. I'm afraid I can't do that today, at least at the Fremont Library. From the data I'm finding, our library has got a very skewed, unbalanced library books. And so that's where I started looking. Why do we have that? And when we get this statement from the Nebraska Library Association that says, you know, individual ideology will become the primary determinant of the library's organization system resulting in censorship by few or for the many. I believe we already have that censorship. Because right now, the selection process for picking books that come into our library is done by one person. Two persons at max, three at max, but those individuals are selecting books that they want in our library and not selecting other books. So when that's the case, is that book banning? Is that censorship by not selecting those books to come into our library? So again, this is not a beat up on the library. As it was explained to me, that the most of the staff is not involved in the selection process. That's where I believe we as a council need to come up with another solution to help balance this out. This became a problem because I believe our books that are in our library are unbalanced. And that caused individuals within our community to go, hey, what's going on here? All they did was ask a question. And that's what I'm asking is what's going on? Why is it so unbalanced? Compare it again. I'm a data analyst. Why are we different than the city down the street? Why are we different from most of the other libraries in Nebraska? If you look at the data that shows the type of books, and again, it's a very easy process for anyone to do. Most of these libraries use the same software, the same webpages. So you pick a topic, you go to one library as such, how many books do we have in there? I narrowed my vision down to simply books, not ebooks, not anything. I just wanted a very simple process of ebook or books. And frankly, I was shocked at what I saw. You know, I have about 10, 11, 12 different cities that have data of what kind of books and what kind of books that are not there. And that was just shocking to me. And so I think, again, just like I offered Councilman Gannon, we need to pump the brakes. We need to stop and say, what's going on here? Let's get together a task force or something that we can come together and find out, look at some data. Let's go get our own data. Look at some data to make sure that we have a balanced library. That those books that I can feel comfortable sending my daughter to a Columbus library, but I can't a Fremont library. Why is that? So I think that is the issue we have to look at is the amount of books we have in certain subjects. And again, I am not about censoring. It's just, I believe the solution here is going to be to limit our books because we have a very limited staff, limited shelf. That doesn't mean we have to have every book that's ever published there. There's books that aren't making our shelves right now because they're not getting selected. So I believe the solution here is not this. This is a stopgap measure. But the solution is to come up with a task force that can be together to evaluate our books that are in the library and to make modifications to our selection process so that it can become a more even library. Thank you.
Councilman Vaughn?
Yes, I have an eight-year-old daughter and I also have an 11-year-old son. And both of them have been taken by me or my wife, mostly my wife, to the library at least a dozen times a year, mostly in the summer since before they could even read. And they have continued to go and they love going there. And what we do is this process where we walk around with them and help them select what books they're going to check out and read. It's an amazing process. I would encourage some other folks to check into it. It's called parental accountability and I just, I'm lost on this. I don't understand why we're up here still talking about this.
Councilman Jensen?
Yeah, Councilman Ellis, I'd like to speak on some numbers. I've got a few for you. In the children's side, there's like 85, and I'm sure Linda can, Linda will fix me if I'm quoting her wrong. Eighty-five hundred books in the children's side and they have percentage that amounts to sex or LGBTQ less than one percent. There's eighty-two hundred books in the children's side, picture books for young children. And just any picturing that might even be slightly considered sexual nature. Less than 20 total. You say the library is not balanced. I say it's very balanced and it is a public library. A book doesn't have to make a popularity con, win a popularity contest in order to be included. The libraries that are charged with providing material for the whole of the library. Sometimes the 80% has got to speak up for the 20%. And that's what I'm going to do here. I know there's going to be other comment, but I want to put the motion on the table to remove this amendment from the library.
Okay, Councilwoman Lathrop?
Okay, thank you. First of all, I just want to thank the library staff. You have been under a lot of scrutiny lately and that is a lot of pressure. I also want to thank the library board. I served on the planning commission and I know that not everybody likes you. And so, but thank you for everything you're doing. Secondly, I'm gonna kind of go off topic a little bit here. I'm sorry if I offend anyone, but you have all kinds of children out there. And some of those children don't even attend the library. They don't even go to the library. They don't read books. Somehow they find this information out and those children share with other children. And we are not putting those children in a separate room. It is the parents' responsibility that if they don't like what those other children are saying, they maybe don't let their children play with them or hang out with them. And I just think it's very similar with the books. You know, you can't put them in a separate room. If you don't like the book, don't check it out. And that's bottom line for me.
Councilman Von Baron?
Yeah, I think, I don't want to drag this out. This is, we've thoroughly hashed this through, but I'd like to explain a couple of things. First of all, I had no intention of surprising the library with this. I struggled with that amendment up until almost before the meeting, till the last minute trying to decide whether to make a motion. What I think I heard with the meeting with the library board and the staff was the library has three functions. First of all, it is selection. It's screening the books and then it's display. From what I understand, if I understood correctly, 70% of the books, what we do is we select 70% of the books of, from the American Library Association's recommended list. And that, okay, so that may not be correct. So, but the point of it is, however, however it's done, I think Lauren made the statement that she doesn't have the bandwidth to monitor purchases. So, understand, but first of all, so in the selection process, do we have a defined process for selecting books? Screening before the display, maybe there is, but clearly in the case that brought all of this to a head, it was not screened because it was not supposed to be where it was, even if it was misplaced or whatever. The third problem was the display, if that is in fact just a matter of the Dewey Decimal System. Basically, what it's saying is that we don't have a consistent coherent method of putting those books in displays. It's a little bit what Councilman Ellis was referring to. We don't have a coherent structured process. The other thing that happens is we almost smiled during this conversation because when I mentioned that there's really no voice from the public in any of those, well, we have the library board. Yes, and that's true. And I have no problem with anybody that's on the board, certainly. But the nature of boards, they are there to defend and protect the organization. And we all basically smile at that. Everybody in here who's been on a board understands that. So it makes it harder for the public to penetrate that barrier. What I'm suggesting is, and I've told a number of people this, I would gladly withdraw that amendment if there were some other alternative, but what I heard from the library and the library board that day for every suggestion was, no, we can't do that. Everything was already set in stone. The library was, was set in doing it as the board had prescribed and their policy had prescribed. But yet, we've got this uproar. And deserved or not, it clearly indicates that not all the public feels represented. So what I'm suggesting, and I didn't really confer with Councilman Ellis on this, but we're thinking along the same line. I've seen some of that same data. That's from a couple of other sources that looks like we have, at least there's a valid question of how balanced our library selection process is. What I would suggest that would settle this whole thing down would be if we would, whether it's a task force or a method, I think all the public is really looking for here is a consistent definable process. And the key to it is it has to be transparent. It has to be measurable. So for example, you know, what's, what's the best way to demonstrate to the public that you have a balanced book selection? What's the best way to demonstrate to the public that those books are in fact screened and displayed correctly? You understand what, we don't need to beat this up, but that's, I think that's really the issue here. The public doesn't see a defined process and maybe there is one. And it might just be a matter of your bringing that forward, putting it in defined terms and just explaining to the public how they can understand what's going on. That's really the issue here. This amendment, I realize, is stopgap. That wasn't intended to be a solution, but given what I've heard back from the library, it was the only way for the public to have any level of input. And I think we can put that to rest if, if there's just some thought and effort put into this. So that's my two cents. I simply just want to see this settled in some way that settles, satisfies all members of the public, not just people that we have chosen now to call radicals. So appreciate your time and thanks so much for your comments and for your patience. We do, we do listen.
Okay. Okay, Councilwoman Gannon? Try again.
I'll try that once, once again. And we've all listened to a number of issues come up and certainly people's feelings. And I know we wanted, as Councilman Ellis said, a debate. Listening to everyone, there really isn't a debate about it. You're either against or for. I mean, that's just the way it is. And we're listening to what I'm hearing is parents feel like they have no control. Yes, they're supposed to be controlling their child and yes, they have input on what they have, but they feel they don't have control on what their child could possibly see in the library if something has been misplaced or something is wrong. On the other hand, our staff and library volunteers have really been put in the hot seat, so to speak. And I'm sure the library board had never a vision of the spots that they've been put in. I mean, it's really high pressure at this point. So I know we're talking about stopgaps, parents want to be heard. And library certainly needs to have input. And we all feel we want to have at least some input and be heard. So I'm gonna propose an amendment that with the spirit of what Councilman Von Baron said, bringing forward and the idea that parents don't feel as though they have any input. I'd like to recommend that we continue with some type of amendment. Any parent or legal guardian having a child age 11 or under may upon written request have a specific book removed from the children's section. Within 15 working days of the written request, the library director will review the request and determine whether she agrees or disagrees with the request. If she agrees with the request, the, the book will be removed to an appropriate section. And I used appropriate section because adult section may not be the appropriate section. And we're going to be having an older children's section. If she disagrees, the library board at its next meeting will decide that the removed book remains in the children's section. Or returns, returns to the children's section or remains in the move section if it's been moved. Let me read, let me sort of, yes, yes, I do. With some changes here, I'll have to rewrite it. Sorry.
Well, we do have a motion on.
Yeah, I'm getting there.
Sorry, that's down the line. We have to vote on yea or nay for his, right? Okay.
Okay.
Okay. And it's voted down. Then we're doing a yes or no? Okay.
There's a motion on the floor from Councilman Jensen at this moment, so to, to remove the the amendment. It needs a second. So I mean, that's, that's what we got to deal with first.
Okay.
That was at this point. Okay. So the amendment, right now, we're reconsidering the amendment.
Proposed by Councilman.
Proposed by Councilman Von Baron. And so that, we haven't had a vote to actually do that.
Right.
So we have to have a vote to do that.
Right. And so a yes vote would be reapproving that amendment. A no vote would be removing the amendment. Right. It would be not adopting it. So, yeah.
Councilman Vaughn?
So if I understand correctly, Councilman Jensen's motion is to rescind the amendment in its entirety. And if I understand that correctly, I will second that motion. No?
No. We're, we're dealing right now with the reconsideration of the motion of Councilmember Von Baron with his amendment. So a yes vote would approve Councilmember Von Baron's amendment. A no vote would not approve his amendment.
So, so just go, if we go back to when we went through this, there's a motion to approve the amendment by Councilman Von Baron. It was seconded. There was a vote. So we're right back there again.
Right.
Right?
Reconsidering that.
So you're reconsidering that, that's that motion. So the motion would be, that's the same motion. It's either yes or no.
Right.
Right?
Councilman Von Baron, I assume would reintroduce that motion and I don't know who seconded it.
I don't, I don't have. So I, 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 legal, I want to follow the right process here. So you just need to.
Yep. Trying to find out who's second. Well, that's the motion on the floor. We could take any other second to it.
Okay.
So this motion on the floor, they're waiting for a second. Is that correct?
Yes. Okay. Is everybody clear? So Councilman Von Baron's initial motion is on the floor. Is there a second? Yes. Okay. Seconded by Councilman Ellis. So just repeat again what a yes and a no vote is at this point.
So a yes vote would be adopting, again, Councilmember Von Baron's amendment to the policy manual. A no vote would not be adopting that amendment to bring the policy manual back to what it was before the amendment was made.
Okay. Okay. Cast your votes.
Motion fails two to six.
Is there, what else?
So now council can make, we have to take a final action on the policy manual itself. So council can propose other amendments or approve the policy manual.
Okay. Councilman Jensen, I'll make the motion to approve as stated.
Councilman Vaughn? I will second.
Cast your votes.
Motion carries five to three.
Okay, the time is 10:30. We'll take a five-minute quick recess. Yeah, new business. We'll get through those. All right. If the city council could go ahead and we're going to get started again, so. All right. We're going to get started. So, all right, we're going to go back into new business. Item 21 is Resolution 2023-063 to authorize execution of a lease agreement with Midland University for Memorial Fields Complex. Okay. Thank you for letting me know that. I didn't realize that. We'll go, we'll wait for staff report. We'll give Councilman Von Baron a minute. All right, we're on item 21. We'll have the staff report, so.
Nick Hanson, Director of Parks and Recreation. Before we move forward,
Uh, before we move forward, I would like to, it was pointed out on resolution of the twenty-three zero six-three. Uh, there was an error for the resolution. Uh, we would like to amend a new resolution. Uh, if we can.
Do you want to receive it in the record, a new resolution?
Correct.
Okay. Do you have copies of it or you just have the one copy? Is it a small change or is it a?
It's just basically changing, uh, a miss.
I would just say you recommend, you just make a recommendation, we amend the resolution and, and we can do that. So do your report and you can give us the change. Okay?
Yep. So Midland University, uh, approached us here about eight months ago. Uh, a possibility of, of maybe leasing the memorial bill, uh, Memorial Field Complex. Uh, there was an exhibit there that kind of shows what the, the Memorial Field complex would, would be located at. Uh, Midland would move from Christianson Field two, which they are currently now.